18th, 2023 meeting of the Lincoln County Commission to Order. Our invocation tonight will be given by our Commissioner Steve Guntherberg, and our pledge allegiance will be given by Gunner and Jackson and Liddy Hendricks. They're the children of Drew and Jess Hendricks. Gunner and Jackson, they attend Bethlehem Christian Academy. So Gunner and Jackson and Liddy, if you will come up here and join Mr. Steve, and if you'll come to the podium, Commissioner Guntherberg for our invocation, followed by our pledge. Please stand.
Mr. Spray, our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the day. We thank thee for all of the people that are here, that all the Commissioners represent. Father, let us make a decision tonight that will be approved by all the people in Lincoln County. Father, we know that there is some discrepancy among all the people. That's actually normal. Jesus Christ, His Self, found that problem Himself. And when you look to Jesus Christ, He didn't go to all the rich people. He didn't go to all the poor people. He met in the middle. And He tried to approve everything that would be acceptable to everybody. So tonight, Father, I hope we can come to a conclusion that won't upset all the Christian people that are in this building tonight. And I know they're here. And Father, we love Thee. Jesus Christ, to get anywhere we need to go, we have to go through Him. And that is what everybody should keep on their mind. That, hey, we're not going to live like Methuselah, 969 years. We're going to live our life, and hopefully, everybody here is in a safe position to talk to their Savior, Jesus Christ. In God's name, I pray tonight that everybody here is safe going home. And I pray that everybody accepts the Lord Jesus as their decision-maker. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Gunner, Jackson, and Liddy. Thank you, Commissioner Guntherberg. At this time, we'll have the roll call by the Clerk, Ms. Phyllis Couts.
Randy Bradford.
Here.
Mary Ann Tackett.
Here.
Steve Spray.
Here.
Daniel Eldridge.
Jason Nix.
Here.
Anthony Taylor.
Here.
Doug Cunningham.
Here.
Pat Haynes.
Here.
Tori Young.
Here.
Brandon Cooley.
Here.
David Sanders.
Danny Walker.
Here.
Ben Brown.
Here.
Bonnie Caldwell.
Here.
Terry Lynn Rogers.
Here.
Roy Frazren.
Here.
Jason Hambrick.
Here.
Jenny Rose Walter.
Present.
Ricky Bryant.
Here.
Lynn Douglas.
Here.
Steve Guntherberg.
Here.
Jack Achley.
Here.
Kate Guin.
Here.
Mark Mitchell.
Here.
I have 23 Commissioners present, one absent.
All right, thank you. The only announcement I have, and I was hoping our new planner would be here tonight, but we did hire Tracy Perkins. She will be our new planner, and she will start that job July the 31st. So she'll be with us at the next, at the next meeting. One of the new things that, there was a law that went into effect July 1st, that the Commission would have a time of public comments. And later in this, the Chairman of the Legislative and Rules Committee would outline the rules on this. But we had some tentative rules to go by for tonight's public comments. And we had three persons to sign up for that. And I will ask those three, you will have three minutes to address the Commission. And we have three, and if you will come to the Speaker's podium there. And the first one to speak is Richard Line. Richard?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'll try to keep this as short as possible. I know you have a long meeting ahead of you. My name is Richard Line. I'm a lifetime resident of Lincoln County. I went to Highland Rim School. My children go to Highland Rim School. I'm a second-generation farmer and a business owner in the community for 17 years. Ladies and gentlemen, Highland Rim School is over 60 years old. The most recent renovation of Highland Rim School is over 20 years old. The max capacity at our school is 690 kids. On any given day, there are over 900 people in Highland Rim School. That is beyond overfilled, ladies and gentlemen. Teachers are sharing classrooms because there is not enough space. Every closet, every hallway, every office space has been turned into a classroom. And that's right, if you go to Highland Rim School, classes are taking place in the hallways because there is no space for our kids. Our special needs students are having to meet in the library because there is no other place for them. There is not adequate facilities, washrooms, handicapped bathrooms, equipment that is needed for this generation of handicapped people that deserve our attention. That is just not acceptable. Kindergarten through eighth grade special needs students all have to meet together. Could you imagine teaching a kindergartner alongside an eighth grader in the same classroom, the stress that that provides? If you go to Highland Rim School, it won't take long to see the needs at Highland Rim School. But plumbing is a major issue, and it's not a matter of when that fails, or, sorry, if it fails, it's when it fails. And when it does, the entire front half of Highland Rim will be shut down for repairs. Because asbestos is going to be found, things are going to have to be brought up to code, all of those classrooms are going to have to be displaced, and to be honest, there's nowhere for them to go. This will cost millions of dollars that cannot be put off and will have to be fixed according to state code. Last year alone, over 300 maintenance requests were at Highland Rim School in 180 school days. If the maintenance department is at Highland Rim 300 times, how much time is left to dedicate to the other schools in our area? And the most important issue that everybody can agree on is safety. There is no way to be this overcapacity and be safe. Your preschoolers are having to walk in the parking lot every day just to go to lunch and recess and general things. If there's a storm, they have to go to the library along with the band, which shuts the library down for everybody else for that day. There's too many safety items for me to mention. We don't have time. But I promise you, if you don't believe me, go talk to Dr. Pickens. She will be glad to give the time to anybody to take you around during a school day and let you see what is really going on. I've had students every day at Highland Rim for the last 12 years, and I had no idea the conditions they are dealing with. It made my jaw drop, and it made me sad for what my students are going through, what my children are going through. I'd like to address a few rumors. Out-of-zone students. Everybody talks about it. But guess what? We can take every student.
10 seconds.
And sign into their zone, and we're all overcrowded still. Ladies and gentlemen, Highland Rim deserves better. If you can do that and not raise our taxes, everybody here would be for that. But if you cannot, I ask that you look at the information that you've been given and make your decision based on the facts and not on your emotions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Don Jenkins.
Good evening. I'm a retired Colonel Don Jenkins, scuttle rancher, and I reside in District 1. Once again, we are here for you all to hear the voices of the citizens of Lincoln County. As you know, Mr. Mayor, you and I agree on just about nothing. But a statement you made in the most recent Budget Committee meeting was most apropos and one that I endorse. You stated, and I quote, "We have an idea problem, not a money problem." To the members of the Commission who listened last month and voted no on the budget proposal, I commend you. For the balance of the group, I pity you for your lack of mental acuity, reasoning skills, and failure to understand that when the people say no, we mean no. Yours is not the authority to override the will of the people. Rather, it is to represent the will of the people. It simply does not matter if you believe you're superior in any way to the constituents of your district. Your responsibility is to represent them. When you vote to take away a person's home so you can fund a non-statutory budget item and/or to provide a raise to a government employee making over $100,000 annually, there is a serious disconnect and an abject failure of representation. Likewise, when a committee or Commission allows a financial situation within the county to get to a point where dramatic increases are needed, outside the plausibility of unforeseen emergency conditions, a fiscal management and leadership issue is very real. When committee members or Commissioners have been in such positions for 30 years and financial burdens are manifested to the point that unonerous levies are placed upon taxpayers, the conclusion is obvious. Those in such positions are responsible for the failure, and their removal from office is equally obvious and necessary. When committee members or Commissioners can vote themselves a raise while in office, which in the case for several members of this body, there is a significant ethical matter that needs to be addressed. In fact, the matter is covered under TCA 5-21-121, 12-4-101, 12-5-5-112. Withdrawal from one position or the other, or recusal, is the very least that should occur. Moreover, failure of leadership is not calling this conflict of interest out is also evident and bear scrutiny and visibility. As such, I call upon each Commissioner in this situation to choose which position you wish to hold and resign from the other. In this aspect, I call the committee and Commission into question as illegitimate in its conduct. And Mayor Newman, I ask you to refer this matter to the State AG for review and investigation. Mr. Mayor, I encourage you to exercise leadership tonight and in the future to force recusals from Commissioners or committee members found in such position. Additionally, I entreat you to exercise leadership when obvious, non-worthy, and meritless proposals are forwarded to the full Commission, rejecting it out of hand by not allowing it to come to a vote.
10 seconds.
The people of this county have placed their trust in this body. It has been seen in the past two months. That trust has been forfeited by many committee members and Commissioners. Now, in vain of ideas, let me propose two. Cause your maintenance director to do his job.
Your time's up, Don. Our next speaker is Steve Halberg.
Good evening. My wife is fighting cancer. I am on disability. I have been overwhelmed both financially, mentally, fighting this battle. Many citizens of Fayetteville and Lincoln County are on fixed incomes, my wife and I included, and we cannot afford your proposed tax increase. This Commission should have made small increases over time instead of hammering taxpayers all at once. I have to live within my budget. I can't afford wasteful spending like the Commission continues to do. Find somewhere to cut your spending instead of increasing it. I have to. Why should I have to pay county taxes? I don't receive any, not one service the county provides. I do not use your roads, schools, nothing. I live in Fayetteville city limits. Between city and county taxes, you have forced me to go to Alabama to buy my groceries and gasoline. Half the tax on groceries, and usually 20 cents a gallon cheaper for gas. Hundreds of citizens are doing the same thing daily. Thousands of people commute to Huntsville every day. No jobs here. Restaurants are closing. Open your eyes. We can't afford this outrageous tax increase. Another thing the citizens of Fayetteville and Lincoln County don't know, after the tax increase and county-proposed increase, there will be new appraisals on your homes and property, which will increase your taxes even more. I guess the Commission is following suit with the Biden administration in an absolute disaster breaking the backs of the taxpayers. This tax increase is unacceptable. You don't care what the citizens have to say, and will continue to do whatever the hell you want.
Okay, that concludes our public comments. Would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of our June 2023 last Commission meeting. I'm sorry, I didn't, Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner Spray seconds. Any questions or comments on last month's Commission meeting minutes? So here, in hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Our next item on our agenda is, you should have received eight monthly committee meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion acknowledging the acceptance of those. Commissioner Rose Walter makes a motion for approval to have a second. Commissioner Frazren makes a second. Any questions on any of those? All acknowledging the receipt of those eight, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously acknowledged. Our, move into our next one. Kevin Chastain, our Lincoln County Planner, has two items on the agenda. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on the agenda is a rezoning, or a request to establish a zoning district on property located on Quarter Road north of Winchester Highway. It's specifically described as Tax Map Parcel 81 Parcel 10.04. The applicant, which is Three Rivers Energy Partners LLC, has requested to establish the I-1 General Industrial Zone District on this property. The property is a total of 42.48 acres. However, the request is to establish the I-1 Zone District only on the portion of the property west of Quarter Road. So the rezoning request is for 29.10 portion acres, portion of the entire property. The purpose is to establish a facility for storage and distribution of fertilizer for agricultural purposes. This was considered by the Planning Commission at their meeting on July 6th, and they did provide you all with a positive recommendation at this meeting.
Okay. Any objection to taking both these together, both of them? Call for, you have an objection to call them? Okay. We'll take them one at a time then. Okay. There's been a call for this one for a public hearing August 15th at 5:30 prior to the August Commission meeting. I would entertain a motion. Make a motion by Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Walker seconded. Any discussion on a call for a public hearing? Commissioner Guin?
Kevin, I went to that planning and zoning.
Yes.
And I called the specs on it. Is this under special impact, industrial district?
What they are proposing, I don't believe it is. In the beginning, at the beginning of this process, when they first came to us, what they were proposing on the site, we did recommend I-3 special impact for what they were originally proposing, which included the processing to create natural gas. That component has been removed from the project. That will be located in a different county. And so at that point in time, the project has been brought down to just hauling the material onto the site and storing it on site, and then it will be hauled back off the site. So at that point in time, there was no processing on site or anything of that nature. And so we looked at that, and we thought that would be appropriate for I-1 industrial.
How about the environment? How about the water? How about the air? How about the smell from this stuff? Have they done studies on that? I know it's new. It's brand new, but it's in our county. And I'm thinking five, 10 years down the road, how's this going to affect our county? When these, my understanding is they're going to dig underground, put material down, put all that sludge in there, cover it up so sunlight can get. How they going to control the smell or leakage when these projects go underground all the way to more county? How is that going to be handled?
Well, at this point in time, we haven't actually seen any type of design on the project. So we have no idea to be able to actually see what they're proposing in terms of the design. The request before you is just to rezone the property, to even potentially bring a site plan in. So we haven't been able to even see a design. We've gotten a general concept of what they're proposing on site, which is a basin to hold the material and then a loading and unloading location, which is all we've seen so far, and that's all, that's actually more than they're required to provide. So at this point in time, we haven't been.
Is there a study of what's going to come with it? I mean, instead of us going to a hearing, and maybe going all the way back to planning the zone, shouldn't we have that information up front?
If you so choose, you can request that information from them. We have not requested that from a Planning Commission perspective, but if you all want to see that, we can request that from them, or you all can make that request to the applicant. Yes.
Or I can make a motion that refers back to planning and zoning, and y'all get that info to give us a meeting, right?
If you so choose, we can do that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, there's a motion that's been properly seconded on the floor at this time. Okay? Any other discussion?
Kevin, do you foresee any buildings on that site?
At this point in time, possibly a small office building as far as what they've actually communicated to us. And that would just be, I think, for someone to be there if someone was coming to load or load out or to unload. But other than that, there's really no type of structures on that site.
There's no rezoning at this point. It's just for a public hearing.
Correct. This is just a request for public hearing on the rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? Okay, we have a motion properly seconded on there for a call for public hearing on August 15th at 5:30. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Passes. We're ready for our next item unanimously.
The next item is also a rezoning, a request for establishment of a public hearing. This request is for Tax Map 139 Parcel 25. It's located on the east side of Huntsville Highway. And this is a request, this property is located in the urban growth boundary of the city of Fayetteville, Tennessee. So therefore, this is a request to establish a zoning on this property, not to rezone. The request is to establish the C-1 Commercial, General Commercial Zone District on this property. The property is a total of 6.27 acres. They are requesting to rezone 1.58 acres at the near the front edge on Huntsville Highway, also near two other properties on C-1 adjacent to Huntsville Highway. So the request is to rezone 1.58 acres to C-1. The remaining 4.69 acres will remain A-1 in terms of its zoning. This was also considered by the Planning Commission at their July 6th meeting, and they did forward it to you all with a positive recommendation.
Okay, and it would be, a motion would be to call for a public hearing at the same time of the previous one, to air a motion to that effect? Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion. Commissioner Spray seconds. Any questions or discussions on a call for a hearing on this property to rezone? All in favor of the public hearing, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor.
Our next is the Library Report, Ms. Megan Mur. Okay, I don't believe, okay. I did see Lincoln County Health System, President of the Health System is very best seals. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Michael. Well, good evening. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. I enjoy getting to come now twice a year and speak to you. And I'm very excited to give our system update for this part of the fiscal year. I'm very happy about the way things are going so far, and I hope you are too. I want to share a little bit of good news. If you've been following us on social media and in the newspaper, you'll see that we've been celebrating. We have recently made it to our first year with our alignment with Huntsville Hospital, and it's been a fabulous first year. I shared with the city last week that we decided to celebrate our first year anniversary. Not that I thought we wouldn't make it to the first year, but I thought it was certainly something worth celebrating. And we want to thank the community, everyone for their support. It was quite wonderful, and it's been a great first year. Three things that I really want to highlight this evening is that above all the celebrating, I hope you've noticed three things about us in our first year. Outside of all the updates to the facilities that we've made, we certainly hope that you've noticed that. I'm going to mention some of those in a minute. We hope you've noticed updates to staffing, both recruitment on the physician side and the employee side. And we hope you've noticed a difference in the quality of care that we're providing. So let me mention some of those. First, let's talk about the great updates we did to the Patrick Rehab and Wellness Center. I've been teasing some about this, but it's not really something to tease about. We get a lot of questions about the Patrick Rehab and Wellness Center, and we want to go on record to say that the Patrick is safe and secure, and we have no plans of taking it away from the community. We hope that you're really happy with the exterior improvements that we've made to the Patrick. And now, if you're watching what's happening, we're finally making some interior improvements to the Patrick. You know, a lot of our facilities here in town are some 30 years old, and our buildings needed quite a lot of love. So I hope you can take some time to go inside and take a look at the Patrick. I'm very pleased with what's happening right now. We're repairing the lobby and doing some floor work to the PT area, PT, speech, and OT, which a lot of you, I know, take some time to visit. So really pleased with that. Our hospital has gotten quite a bit of love this year, too. As you well know, we've survived a tornado, and I don't know if that's good luck or bad luck, but I'm going to go with good luck. If we've survived a tornado, we can survive anything, right? So right now, our hospital is undergoing some, we'll be undergoing a new paint job. We've had to push that along a little bit sooner than what we had planned, but you'll see that coming soon in the future. And then as well, I've talked to you a lot about Donaldson Care Center. Thank you to the support that you've given to Donaldson. It's come a long way and doing really well. And we'll expect to make some exterior repairs to Donaldson in the future as well. Want to talk a little bit about our recruitment. Last year, when I came back to Fayetteville, we had somewhere between 80 and 90 open positions. I think I spoke to you about this back at Christmas time. And that is a lot of positions for a health system. Now, we do encompass, again, the Patrick, Donaldson, Lincoln Medical Center, Home Health and Hospice, and EMS. But that's a lot of open positions for a health system. And I'll say that right now, we're just shy of being under 50, so we've almost half-cleared those open positions, and we're really happy about that. I think we've made a lot of great progress in the last year as well. I hope you've noticed the improvements we've made to specialty care in the area. So while we haven't made a big dip into primary care yet, there have been a lot of specialty care physicians that have come into the area, so urology, neurology, podiatry. I hope you've noticed some of that. So our promise to you is coming up in this next year, we're going to put a strong focus on primary care. I think that's something that's very important. Everybody needs a primary care physician, and we have somewhat of an aging medical staff in our community. So we'll be working really hard to recruit primary care in the upcoming year. I want to talk a lot, too, about what we've done in the community. I hope you've seen that we've tried to be transparent in everything we've done this year. So whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, we want to talk about it because I think that's how we improve upon it. So we've done a lot of work with the school systems. And I'm really happy to say that we're actively in every high school. And so we've brought back job shadowing into the hospital, and actually, all of our facilities, you'll see a student, whether they're job shadowing, a nurse tech, or a speech therapist, physical therapist, our nurses, all of our departments in the hospital. We even had a special needs student who got to job shadow in our dietary department at the hospital this year, and I was very proud of that. We graduated our first-ever student advisory board and offered a scholarship to a student, and we were very excited about that. These students get to come in, they're rising juniors and seniors who are interested in going into the healthcare field. And we show them everything about healthcare that you can imagine, to get them very comfortable. and we show them everything about healthcare that you can imagine to get them very interested in it. And I was really happy to be able to do that. They actually got to wear green cords when they graduated and walked across the stage, and I think some of them were more excited about that green cord than anything, but we were real happy to get to do that. Something that's coming in the future is that we've partnered with TCAT. That's another thing we're doing. We're partnering with all the community colleges in the area. TCAT is one we're working very closely with right now, and I'm happy to report that we'll be bringing the CNA program back to the community, and that'll start in September. We get a lot of calls about where students can go to get their CNA license. And I'm happy to report we'll be able to offer that here, so they'll take their coursework part at Lincoln Central, and then they'll do their clinical portion at Donaldson. And so kids will not have to travel outside anymore to do that. So there'll be more to come about the CNA program. I hope that when I see you at Christmas time, I'll be able to tell you about the first graduating class. We became a foster-friendly business this year, something we're very passionate about. You'll hear us always talking about working with kids and working with families. So a discount is offered to families in this community who have foster children in their home. They can come to the Patrick for the day and use the facilities, the pool, the basketball court. That was something we really wanted to do. And again, I can't talk enough about our involvement in the schools. We... You know, "No Child Left Behind" is also a motto that I want to say that we use at the health system, so we'll never turn a child away, even college students. I say that to anybody listening in the audience. You know, get in touch with us. We want to help a child. I believe as much trouble as we're all having in our industries right now to recruit, we've seen that in the health system. So we want to push children forward and give them away, and that's what we're trying to do. And I would say, where are we headed in the next year? You know, I think what we're trying to do is show people that we're a health system that wants to take care of people, and we want to recruit as many physicians here to the town as we can to keep you here locally using healthcare. And I hope that if you have tried us out in the last year, that you have had a good experience and that you want to come back and do that again. And will every time be a good experience? No, it will not. We will mess up, and we will have to do better going forward, and we know that, and we recognize that. And I ask that you be patient while we work to be better because that is exactly what we're trying to do. I want to make sure I give a shout-out to our employees before I close. While I may come and bring the messages, and you may see my face on some of the things, they are behind me all the way. They do the work. They are there right now, you know, making things happen, and they should not be left out in this because that's what's made all of this possible, so.
Thank you.
Can I answer any questions?
Any questions for Mary Beth? I'll say this. We are the envy of all the other counties that are close to our size on healthcare. No one compares. I was at a meeting this week in North Georgia, Henry County, and I'm putting them in touch with you, but there's several rural counties... There's not very many rural counties left with a public health system, anything like what we got. And our association with Huntsville Health System as a public hospital, too, that's not the same as affiliating with a private hospital that's going to be using us as their emergency room and referring. This is still a full health system, and there's a lot of people in this room. When I look at Anthony and a lot of others that are in here that carried us to the point that we got to, and Mary Beth took over, Steve's... I mean, CEO Spray did a wonderful job, but there's just a lot of people in this room that if it hadn't been for them, we wouldn't be where we are today. And thank you for all you're doing, and your staff, and those people that work in our health system, because when people look at our community, they look at healthcare and education and some other things, but those are the two biggies that they look in. And I don't think there's another county in the state of Tennessee that compares when you look at either of those entities as far as Lincoln County. So thanks for all you do. And I can say this. If I call Mary Beth, the action occurs. And if you want to call me, and I call her, but if you call Mary Beth, I don't care who's in this room, she's going to get it taken care of. And just like she said, nobody's perfect in the job that they do, but they will correct whatever it is that needs correcting, Mary Beth. Now, thank you for your attitude and your service to our community, too.
So much.
Thank you. Our next item, Jack Ashley is our chairman of our Ruseon Legislative Committee. We had a meeting today, and he's going to bring us up to what would be proposed for this full commission to vote on.
Fellow commissioners, we're here tonight basically Tennessee Open Meetings Act that was passed, and what it says is Tennessee Open Meetings Act defines a meeting as the convening of a governing body or a public body for which a quorum is required to make a decision or to deliberate toward a decision. Also, Tennessee Open Meetings Act grants the public the right to attend, observe public meetings. It also requires governing bodies to provide a period for public comment and where there's an actionable item on the agenda. The public comments must be germane to items on the agenda, so... And we have the right to limit the number of speakers, the time, and et cetera. So our Ruseon Legislative Committee, made up of myself, Brandon Coley, Mary Ann Tackett, Steve Spray, and Pat Haynes, and we had a lot of visitors tonight as well with some input. We want to submit to you to adopt this rule on our allowing citizens' input. Comments may only be made on items on the agenda of that meeting. This is talking about this meeting here, the commission meeting. The period of the public comment will be 30 minutes right after the announcements. The number of speakers allowed to speak during the public comment section is 10, which because they have three minutes each, and the speaker's comments must be... Shall be addressed to the chairman of the commission. Anyone wishing to speak at the meeting must submit their name and desire to do so in person and in writing to the county mayor's office before 12 noon the day of the meeting. That gives them two or three days. Our agenda is printed and available two or three days before our meeting, and so they can see what's on the agenda. If they want to speak, they can go to the county mayor's office before 12 noon, day of the meeting. This is what we're proposing, and I guess I'm asking for a motion to accept this to put in our view.
I would entertain a motion, and then we have comments or anything along that line. I'm sorry, I didn't... Commissioner Coley makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Guntherberg, seconds. We're open for discussion. Commissioner Cunningham?
Then we're just voting on the commission rules at this time.
This is just the commission, this meeting tonight.
Okay. Everybody understand? Has to be on the agenda. You've got three minutes. Maximum length of time is 30 minutes for all the speakers. They're addressing me. They're not chewing out the commissioners when this. And you have to have come into the mayor's office and sign up by noon of the day of the commission, and you will tell what you want to speak on and what side of any item that you might want to, whether you're for... Any questions? All in favor of that approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Now...
Second item addresses all the other committees, and because these committees do not make decisions, they just make recommendations that are voted on by this commission, we felt like that all other committees will allow citizens to sign up and speak 10 minutes before the meeting. So if you come to any other committee meeting, you want to speak at that committee, you're welcome to do so. There'll be a sign-up sheet 10 minutes prior to that meeting, and you can sign up, and you'll be able to speak as well. Same thing, 30 minutes max, three minutes per person, and addressing it to the chairman. All those are still in part of that, but we just felt like that we want to be transparent and allow the citizens to speak at any of our committee meetings. They are public meetings. They are announced and publicized so that you know when they are, and so if you wanted to come and speak at any of those, you're welcome to do that. So that's the second part of it. All other committees, 10 minutes before the day of the meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Frazren, second. Set. Everybody understand what this covers. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved.
And the last thing we had over the years, we've had in our rules that commissioners can only serve on four standing committees, a maximum of four. But I felt like, and the Ruse committee felt like that... And I noticed that this happened early on, and it's happened in the past. I feel like we ought to inject a minimum of two. And the reason for that, there has been times when a commissioner was not on any meeting, any committee. But I feel like it's fair to spread the workload, and not only spread the workload, but also to allow these commissioners to gain some experience on these committees. So we're wanting to make a proposal to be maximum of four, minimum of two committees that they serve on.
Everybody understand that one? Is that a motion to approve? Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Ewen, second. Set. Any questions? Comments? Discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. I think we're ready for our budget committee report. Commissioner Bryant?
Thank you. Budget committee of the county legislative body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, may present to due notice in the library at Lincoln Central Academy on July the 10th, 2023, at 6 o'clock PM. Item 1, county mayor. He had no items to present at this time. During that time, Chairman Cunningham welcomed new finance director Jason Nix. Item 2, finance director Nix presented the following items. Item A, tax relief attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewen, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of matching the $135 tax relief given by the state and an additional $50 to qualified applicants that meet the guidelines in accordance with the state. The tax relief program will be evaluated every year going forward.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Will be approved.
Commissioner Bryant makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Rolls Walter seconded it. Any discussion on this item?
So it's going to be a total of $320 that they'll be giving?
It could be 270 plus 50. That'd be 320, counting the state and county.
If the state's giving 135, where's our 185 going to come from?
It's going to come from the general fund. We get reimbursed, the state... They get credit for it far as their property tax on their local property, but we get refunded that. Now, we do not get refunded the 35 plus the 50, so that's coming out of the general fund.
How much do we get refunded?
135. 135 gets refunded. 185 does not get refunded. And at the... I think I'm correct on this. The 135 on the number that we've had lately is about $76,000, so that's how much the refunded part is going to be. So if the same people, same number qualified, it's going to be about $100,000.
May I add something to that?
Mary Jane? Yes.
I want to explain that $135 is what the state gave last year. That changes every year.
Okay.
So it could be more, or it could be less. So what they're telling me is basically it's going to be less than $135 this year. So I want you to understand that changes every year based on a formula that is given by our equalization factor, the social security factor from the state. There's a lot of things that make that rate, but I want you to understand that that $135 was last year. It doesn't necessarily mean it will be this year.
And we're not having to adopt that policy. You already have that in place. What we're voting on is what the county is going to fund. What Mary Jane is already doing is what she discussed there, but I did misrepresent it saying it was a 135 that it did. Thank you for that correction, too.
So if we max the, per se, 135, we get that money back from the state, so in essence, all it really costs to us out of the general fund is 50 dollars.
No. No. This would be in addition. What Mary Jane's already doing, it's neutral money-wise as far as the county. It doesn't affect us one way or the other. It helps those people that qualify on it. If you vote tonight and this passes, it will be... We'll be spending about $100,000 to help these people in addition to what the state's already doing. Okay? We're not voting on anything that Mary Jane's office has already implemented that relates to the state. This would be strictly county money that we're spending to help those people.
Just to clarify, this motion is matching the state, or this...
Well, when we said match, that was where the 135 came from. It... We're at the point, I think, when it was in the budget, the point that was discussing was we can't commit to the next commission what we vote on tonight. So in next year's budget, it would have to be voted on again if we still were going to participate in the local-funded part. Zach, where's Commissioner Cunningham?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We just set that 135 because that was what the state was giving, but if the state decided to lower it, we discussed keeping in the 135.
Or do nothing.
Yeah, you know, just being... I don't mean just doing nothing, but I...
But at this time, if we vote, what the budget committee proposed would be $185.
Just writing up those individuals who, you know, qualify or disabled and senior citizens that, you know, have a hard time. We're trying to help those folks.
Okay. Okay?
Is there a limitation on the qualifying, Mary Jane? Is there?
Well, qualified for the state that already is, they're 65 and older, are disabled, and there are qualifications for that with an income limit that changes every year. And so if you qualify for that, what I understand is if you qualify from the state level, then you would qualify then from the local match. There are qualifications for all of them.
Good question. Anyone else? We don't have a motion yet, do we? Okay? Okay? All righty. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
B, 141 general purpose school fund budget amendments, and they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the 141 general purpose school fund budget amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Oh, Commissioner Haynes makes a second. Any discussion on those amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Surplus property, and that's attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Ewen, seconded by Commissioner Colwell, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the sheriff's surplus property.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ewen seconded it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
We have a little information attached right below that.
Okay.
Sheriff Blackwelder informed the committee that his department had looked over their budget and cut items out and saved about $200,000. Sandy Metcalf, CFO, from the sheriff's department, informed the committee that the freezer had been paid out of the fiscal year 2223 budget, which is this year's, or last year's budget, and the guardian will be purchased from other means. Sandy also informed the committee that the sheriff's department has their own pay scale and personnel policy, and was told by the finance department that no increases in salary would begin until the fiscal year 2324 budget had passed. Finance department did check with auditor, CTS, and the comptroller's office to verify that information. Committee informed the sheriff's department that once the 2324 budget passes, they will all pay, but be retroactive back to July 1 of this year. Joyce McConnell from sheriff's department came before the committee stating that when she takes office as interim sheriff, she would cut the budget $63,000 plus fixed charges. Item D, financials. We had a motion by Commissioner Colwell, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, past seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of enclosed financials.
Do I have a motion acknowledging the financials being received? Commissioner Taylor makes it. Commissioner Young seconds it. Any questions? All in favor of approval, acceptance, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
There was some discussion about a wheel tax item, a lot of discussion actually. There was a motion by Commissioner Ewen, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, past six yes, one no, and one absent, to request Attorney Sims to check on the language for the wheel tax resolution, report back on August 1st, 2023, to the budget committee. And I'm, well, I guess that's a motion.
Okay. This, this would be a request for a report from our Attorney Sims back to the budget committee. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Rolls Walter makes a second. Any discussion on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no?
No.
Any other no votes? Commissioner Bryant votes no. All others, yes. Less corrected. Let it be recorded to that effect. 22 yes, one no. Motion passes. Commissioner Bryant?
E, fiscal year 2324, final budget approval enclosed. E1, appropriation resolution, which is attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, in past seven yes and one absent, to recommend approval of the attached resolution making appropriations for various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies for Lincoln County, Tennessee, for the year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024.
Okay. Now we're in the 2324 budget proposal. There are three items in this. The first that we'll vote on is the appropriation resolution, and that's the monies that are broken down to the different funds, and that will be our first item. We will vote on these each individually, and the first one is appropriation. I would entertain a motion for approval if you see fit. Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion for approval of the appropriation resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bryant. Floor is now open for discussions on the appropriation resolution. If there is not, we'll move to vote. We will do this by roll call, please. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll. A yes vote would be to approve as proposed the appropriation resolution that's attached in your budget package.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Nix?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
No.
Commissioner Bradford?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
No.
Commissioner Spray?
No.
Commissioner Ashley?
No.
Commissioner Ewen?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Colwell?
No.
Commissioner Rogers?
No.
Commissioner Cooley?
No.
Commissioner Sanders? Commissioner Walker?
No.
Commissioner Frazren?
No.
Commissioner Hambrik?
No.
Commissioner Rolls Walter?
No.
Commissioner Bryant?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
No.
Commissioner Guntherberg?
No.
I have eight in favor, 15 no, and one absent.
Okay. Motion fails.
Yes.
Our, our next is the tax levy resolution, which is in your package two, and the proposed, that would be a tax rate of $2.9620, 2.9620. What's the will of commission on this item? Okay, well, if there's no motion on that, we'll move to the nonprofit appropriation resolution. Is there a motion on to the nonprofit appropriation resolutions? Seeing none? We have no votes on two. Next item?
Item three?
Yes, sir.
Item three. Chairman Cunningham recognized Fire EMA Director Doug Campbell, and his presentation is attached. And the last thing, there being no further business to be presented, we had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Bryant. We're ready for the notary publics. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to make a recommendation that we move this from 86 cents down to 80. It's coming down 30 cents. They put it at 290.
Okay, let, let me make, let me get back to my, okay, you're proposing a tax rate of what?
290.
Okay, that's six cents down.
Six down.
Two dollars and, okay, it has to be a four-digit. Okay. Is there a, is there a second to this? Okay, Commissioner Hambrik seconds that on a tax rate of 2.900. Floor is open for discussion on that before we call for a vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That, that was a plan that the finance department had put together, and how you get from 286 down to 280, so you can pick my voice is kind of bad, but you cut half the travel for everybody, also includes some cuts in the sheriff's department, and matter of fact, Mr. Nix, I'm sure has got it, but also includes cuts to just a little bit of everything here and there, to get that down another three cents on the general fund side, and of course, then the maximum three cents. So that brings from 286 down to 280.
But I think that'd come under appropriations, not on the tax rate, sir.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's, you go back, you'd have to, with the new appropriation.
It would, it would, okay. Any other discussion on the rate?
I have a question about the travel. Does that include the sheriff's support?
Okay, now, we're not voting on, when we get back to appropriations, if you vote, if you vote for this, you know, there's not anything that we're voting on, on this rate. I mean, whatever y'all decide where the cuts come, I mean, there could be no cuts. You could say, let's take it out of ARP money to make up the difference, and no cuts. It's, right now, you're voting on the rate whether to have a $2.90 tax rate. Everybody understand that? If you want the rate to be that, that's what we're voting on now. Then, if y'all want to then vote on appropriations, you can vote on whatever adjustments you want in there where they want, or if you want to do whatever, or if you want to go back to, to finance and them come back with them. But right now, you're voting on a tax rate of $2.90. Everybody understand? Well, that's, I'm the chairman. I just have to do what y'all tell me to do. But it has been, it has been made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Is it the personal property tax? Is that gonna come in anytime between now and the end of this year? And if it is, how much would it be? And whatever you say, how much of that do you think will be reduced?
Okay, say that one more time, Commissioner Taylor.
Personal property tax?
Okay. Oh, yes, okay. Here's when that, when that adjustment is, and always it is a little complicated, but because personal business property is based on the index of market value to assessed value on real estate, it gets a little complicated. So right now, personal business property is getting a 40% discount this year. Next year, it goes back to 100%. The difference between what they're paying now, 60% to 100% that is gonna come in starting next October, October of 2024, is 1.2 million dollars. Okay? It, it's, it's in next year's budget, but it does come in during, during that year. But that's, that's how that is. It could be more than that, but that's the adjustment on what it is. Personal business property is assessed annually by the state. You turn in your thing, and then they audit a certain percentage of those, but that's, that's where that 1.2 million is.
What about the solar farm tax? Is that gonna come in this year, or is that included?
About.
290 years?
The what?
Solar farm.
The what?
Solar farm.
Solar farm, the bill has been sent for that, and here's the other thing. We don't know where our money is on some of the tax abatements on the industry. We have not, the only one we have received from the city is Frito Lay. We got that in, but we, but the county had to build a solar farm, and we billed them, and I think it's 100, somebody correct me, 120,000 about?
113.
113. We'll get that money in, because they've requested the bill a couple of times. We just didn't get them billed. But I've requested from the city today information on where the other money is and which we have not received yet on the other tax abatements and pilots. And I hope everybody got the JCF, you know, on that. I don't know that, we may get that money or we may not, but that was the one that they closed down, and that was 60-something thousand dollars. That's just to show you what one year's abatement, I mean, that's what they paid that, excuse me, I'll get it right. That's how much they owe with their, their abatement. That's how much their taxes are that they owe us, whether we get it or not, I don't know.
Was that included in the 290?
113's not included in the, not the proposed list, that we just, that we just felt. Reason for that is because we haven't gotten it yet. It's been billed, we've not even gotten it.
But you're gonna get it this year, sometime this year.
We hope.
Yeah. So why would you not include that?
Because it's not, it's never been billed, it's never, when you, when you do budgets, whenever it's been done, and even in the past, before I got here, it's all the good budget practices, I'm budgeting money that's been audited, seen, felt and had it. This is a new billing, something that we did send a bill out this year for, but you've never gotten it. So as a general practice of budgeting, I just, I don't feel comfortable budgeting for something that we've never audited before, never seen it, never been in here.
Budgets are based on assumptions, and assumptions that may or may not come. This would be a reasonable assumption that you're gonna receive a solar farm money. You already done it, and hopefully it's up to them to pay it, so that should be really taken into consideration.
You can take it in there, it will, but it still wouldn't change the, wouldn't change, wouldn't move the deal.
It reduces expenses, it reduces expenses, it brings the revenue up, it reduces.
Okay. They will receive another bill October 1st. This is what, this is the past bill, so they still will get another bill for this coming up when everybody else gets their property tax bill. This is what they already owed from last year. They'll get a new one for the 113,000 come October 1st, too. And so will Heretic get a bill this coming year on it, which is not, they have not been due paying a bill until this coming up October.
How many years have we not billed there?
And, uh, I think it, they really didn't owe a bill until last year, but it was basically, we were nearly two years behind on billing them. If it'd gone to October, we'd have been two years behind.
And what's the, what's that revenue coming in from there?
113, 113,000.
Here it is.
No, that, no, that's, that's from the solar farm.
Right, well, here.
I, I, do you remember on that? I don't remember. Recognize Commissioner Rolls Walter?
At the last.
It's not on.
You're, you're welcome to come over or talk loud, either one.
Red means off.
All right. All right. I'll just try and talk loud. At the last budget meeting, at the end, what I asked is not reflected in here, and this does have to, have to do with what we're voting on. I had asked three questions. One of the questions was, if we apply everything that the sheriff's department had put on the table, and I don't believe that, um, Miss, I'm going to not say your name correctly, Ms. Conley? McConley, okay. Was that 63, Ms. Joyce, was that $63,000 plus the benefits included?
In 86, or?
And what were, it was not?
It was on 86, because that was, we, we found that out early, not, but in the 80s, that one, yes.
We will be included. And then my next question I pointed out about travel, and that had not been included.
Not in 86, correct.
And I felt a little misled on that, because I had called finance and acquired, and I thought that it was going to be in there. And so the reason why I'm a no vote is, I had spoke at the last meeting, said I was looking for compromise, and I wanted us to identify any penny, even if it's one or two, I want to grab it and I want to do right. And so that's why I was a no vote. I also brought up as a point of record, a question about the Richardson property that was not included in these minutes either. So I would like for those to be amended and for that to be in there, because I did ask as a point of record for that to be in there. But that's why I was a no vote. I have researched to the best of my ability when we were at the budget meeting where all the commissioners were invited to offer up their thoughts. Not everyone attended, I was a little disappointed in that. The ones that were there, not everybody offered up some suggestions. I was a little disappointed in that. I think that we can do better. But I said at that meeting, when Doug Cunningham asked, where are you at? What is yours? And I said 40 cents. So I'm with the 40 cents. I think that that's fair, it's brought it down, it shows compromise, and it also helps get the schools, so I support the 40 cents.
Okay.
80, correct, yes.
A 40 cent increase?
And then we would double, so it's at the 80.
80 cents, okay, all right, okay. We still have a motion on the floor that we're having discussion on. Any other discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Trying to do fast calculation. The 40 cents goes after about 2.8 million on our rearage. If we're three in the hole, that puts us over next year. This is a 24-month budget, because it's gonna be the exact same the following year. Oh, that, that'd put us, hmm, probably somewhere around 3.2 over. I'm trying to figure out, might be a little bit more than that. If we, was to reduce it to the 27 cents out of that 40 would be what you're going after for the rearage. If we were to reduce that by seven cents, that's a million and a half, that puts us whole in two years, plus the million two. And then that's enough to cover all the expense. And I think that will put us with plenty of padding to take care of any of the financial help for the, for the burden. Just trying to do some fast calculations there. I think we can do better than the 40. Meet somewhere a little bit in, in between there. We're still gonna be governing for profit at the end of next year. And I, I'm close to you there, but just still a little bit. And I'm I'm close to either, but just still a little bit too much meat on the bone there at the end of the next, not the end of this year, but the end of next fiscal year.
What's a year?
After doing it, I'm about at thirty-two. I'm about at thirty-two considering the tax relief is where I'm at. And I think that's where my constituents would ask for me to be. But that's just discussion to put out there.
Okay. Any other discussion?
What is he cutting out at that?
I'm sorry.
What what are you cutting out to get to that?
I'm cutting back on going after the, I'm not going after the three million. It's hard. I'm thinking I'm going after it instead of two, eight, I'm going after it about at one and a half. Be a little over. We've not thought about first time taxpayers. We grow somewhere about seven to eight million a year in tax revenue. That's not a, that's, that sounds like a lot. It's not a lot of meat coming in off of that. We do have the solar farm, we do have new revenue. JD paying on the buildings will come around. There's more revenue there. It's gonna be a real tight budget, but then we get relief fifteen months now.
Is that the school?
I don't know. I've never been told what the school has to have in order to do it.
This is, this, this, I think if we, I think if we do not take any of our ARP money and which y'all have heard me, I want us to take some of it to buffer this next year. I think we've, somewhere around a fifty cent increase would be what it would, a minimum that it would take for the school to still, where we'd put the money in debt service and the line item of capital improvements.
Do we have to build that school right now?
That's up to you.
Yes, yes, yes.
What's wrong with ninth grade candidates sitting over there doing nothing?
It's full.
It's full. Well, I'm feeling it.
Okay, that's, okay. Any other discussion from commissioners?
I think a metered approach like that would have worked before. It should have been considered before, but here we are and the hole is big. And building it up a little here and a little there is not going to help solve the issue. I think forty cents is what's needed, it's what's fair and it shows compromise and it meets everybody where they're at. And I think if we don't do that number, I'm very concerned in three years what's going to happen based on the numbers and the environment that we're in today.
Okay. Motion, the motion on the floor is a tax rate of $2.90. Is there any other discussion? We have not voted on appropriations, nor have we voted on the nonprofits after we went through all that.
I'm pretty sure after talking to all my constituents and Facebook messages, text, the phone calls, they're all against such a fast property tax hike. Because they want the burden to always be on property owners, which we really don't own property. We just rent it because we're always going to pay tax on it throughout this year. We've got to find some other cuts to make somewhere, whether it's salaries or the top people out. I mean, when we've got select groups that are taking half or not quite half, a third or more of the raids that are proposed, that don't leave much of the building and school. You know, let's take some of that money and put it towards the school. Don't get me wrong, Hollerim needs a school or needs maintenance going on, it needs renovations, needs something fixed on it. But we can't just jump out there and say, hey, we're gonna spend fifty million because we don't have it. So where do we get it from? I mean, we raised, put it, put it on property owners. I mean, I work like everybody else out here, I don't like paying taxes. Nobody likes paying more taxes than I have to. Then you come back to the fair share, as the great Thomas Sowell says, what is the fair share?
Well, I don't know, but when you put the tax that we want to put on people plus the tax that the city put on people and those people in the city have to pay double, what's fair about that?
If that took five years to build it, why don't you take five years to fill the hole up?
Okay, other discussion from commissioners?
Your proposal to use the money in fifty cents, would that, would that cover all the budget items?
Now, I talked, is Bill Heath back there? Okay, okay. Bill and Bill and I, just as casual at other meetings, he said, I think, am I correct this? If we didn't increase it at least fifty cents, we couldn't cover debt service and put enough in line item capital, is that not true?
No, when the Nautic, whatever his name was, came to the budget meeting, he said about one penny per million and our estimates were going in were about right at forty million. Bids won't be back until the first of August to get a firm number. But since the value of the penny has gone up, I guess that forty can turn into thirty-eight point five or so in that estimate, that's the best estimate we have at this time.
Okay. Okay, so slightly less than forty cents far as that one half of it. Does everybody understand that? That's Commissioner Cunningham?
We, our job as county commissioners is too passive, but that's our number one responsibility is too passive. But trustee was in a meeting last week and they were, other trustees and the state people were saying, God, tonight, I don't see how in the world you're gonna be able to get your bills and stuff out, property tax bills and things out, as it is. Said it's gonna be November before you get all this billed, which usually would occur in October. Is that right, Mary Jane? So like I said, we don't, we've got to pass a budget tonight. We can't go into another month. We've, there's people waiting on us to do their job and that's the trustees office, other offices. So we need to, we need to come to some kind of resolution tonight. And I think this eighty cents is a long way from the dollar ten that we originally proposed, but it's still, it gets the school in there. Of course, the school kind of concerns me because I know prices have just skyrocketed. We recently had the archives that we had projected at 850,000 to renovate that. Well, it's come back just to first estimate at 1.2 million. So that's 400,000 already that we're gonna have to find somewhere in new money and we hadn't even considered that. So I would imagine that this school's bids are gonna come back higher than what we think. So, you know, forty cents, Dr. Heath said he felt, you know, comfortable that they could get it done with that. I think the eighty cents is about the bottom of the barrel if you want to get the raises, if you want to get that pace scale and if you want to do something for the school.
Any other discussion?
Well, that's all well and good, but I still say we have to thank the people who cannot pay that high tax. We can do better than this, so figure it out.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, the motion that's before the commission, and we'll have a roll call on this, Madam Clerk, is to set a tax rate of $2.90. Call, roll call.
Commissioner Bradford? Commissioner Tackett?
No.
Commissioner Spray?
No.
Nix?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Aye.
Haynes?
Yes.
Young? Yes.
Coley?
No.
Sanders? Walker?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rogers?
No.
Frasrand?
No.
Hambrick?
Yes.
Rose Walter?
Yes.
Bryant?
No.
Douglas?
No.
Guntherberg?
No.
Ashley?
No.
Ewan?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
I have eleven in favor, twelve no, and one absent.
Motion fails. Okay, now we're ready for our notary publics.
I have Sidney Goff by Commissioner Coley, Marie Carter by Commissioner Bryant, Paul Crumley and Melissa Widener by Commissioner Rose Walter.
Natalie Brooke Fanning and John R. Fanning by Commissioner Bryant, Brittany Donaldson by Commissioner Caldwell, Victoria Jeffries by Commissioner Hambrick, Amy Fitch by Commissioner Bryant, Jeffrey McWilliams and Shelby Brown by Commissioner Brown, Jennifer Edwards by Commissioner Sanders.
Any additions to those? Any commissioner has an addition? Not, I would entertain a motion for approval of those.
Make motion.
Commissioner Frasrand makes a motion, Commissioner Mitchell seconds. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Floor is now open for new business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Please, we have a ten-minute recess.
Okay. Do I have a, well, I'm going to get a motion. Do I have a second? We got a motion for a ten-minute. Commissioner Spray, yes, holds in favor of a ten-minute recess, please say aye. Any opposed, no?
No.
Let's have a roll call vote on that. Roll call. This is, yes is for a ten-minute recess, no is for no recess, we continue with new business.
Commissioner Ashley?
Yes.
Ewan?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Coley?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Frasrand?
No.
Hambrick?
Yes.
Rose Walter?
Yes.
Nix?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Bradford?
Commissioner Bradford? Yes?
Yes.
Tackett?
Yes.
Spray?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Guntherberg?
No.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Twenty in favor, two no, one absent.
Got a ten-minute. We're back in order and under new business. There's, Commissioner Cunningham's recognized.
Mr. Chairman, like I say, we can't leave here without a budget. So I don't know what the proposal would be, but you know, if we want to go back to this eighty cents, which is a good figure, we need somebody that totally knows to turn around and request another vote on. I mean, that's the only way I see it, oh, we've got to have a budget. And if we don't get those raises and that stuff in there, we're just, we're just laying with fire.
Well, not correcting you, but we don't have to have a budget. It does make an imposition to those administrators that have to administer what we do in our budget. But our worst-case scenario, we do have to have one in place before the first of October and I hope that's not the case, but, but anyway. Well, we request, we request from the comptroller a 30-day extension at the end of August, but we have till end of September before the commission, I mean, the comptroller, then they pass a budget for us. So, so we've got, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if we use one million of ARP, we'll lower it fifteen cents. And the city hasn't paid us yet, Frito Lay's always wants to pay us, we got that money coming. Do y'all want a budget or not?
Well, the million's not reoccurring. Once that's gone, we would still incur the same bills next year. And next year is a reappraisal year. Can't go back if the books don't balance next year and we don't have that ARPA money, that won't work. It's gonna mess.
Well, we do have, we do have, and I have no idea how much money we're owed on our pilots and our tax abatements from industry because we've only been paid one of them and there's somewhere between seven or eight of those we have not been paid for yet in this year's budget, the 22, 23. So we still have some monies coming in from those and that's the same of the solar, too. But if you use the ARP money, which I've said in budget, I was for using some of that so we could buffer it and catch up on a solar pace. But you're correct, it's not reoccurring. The ARP money is not reoccurring, but we do have still funds that are gonna be coming in that we hadn't even received in this year's budget. Commissioner Bryant?
It's worth saying from a personnel committee standpoint, I think that, and I don't know what the officials would do. Some of them are here, some of them are not, and I'm not trying to put them on the spot and not going to put them on the spot. But, you know, we've been told in a budget meeting and, or not told, but it's been emphasized that it's highly probable or possible at least that we have a salary suit. And I want to talk about that just a second, I didn't plan to talk about it. So some of these numbers may be just a little bit skewed. But in the, in the budgeting process, which started with myself and Commissioner Young and Commissioner Bradford on the personnel committee, you know, we worked pretty hard to get that personnel pay schedule where it was palatable, I guess is the word I need to use for everyone. The study indicated, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss these numbers up because I didn't prepare for this, but the study indicated somewhere in the range of 23, I believe, to 54% that we were behind. And that's even with the raises last year. We gave a substantial raise last year. So I believe the, because we weren't, we didn't have a lot of people that were 54% behind. But we, you know, we had some people that were in the high thirties. So I want to say that that average was somewhere around 33 to 34%. That's an average, we were behind. So what the personnel committee done in that, in that, those meetings and they were, like I've said, they were pretty rough and it's always hard to be on that committee, is that we created a new scale. And that scale has simply has five steps. It doesn't do what the salary study said we should do. It does about half of it. For instance, so there, we've got some folks that are in some pretty high, I consider high-level positions that make about $12 an hour and they handle tons of that, tons. They, they pay people in some cases, that's what they do in some cases. And those people, if they've been there two or three years, they make, you know, $11 an hour, $12 an hour, something like that. And the study said that those people should be making around 20 to 22, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly. Well, where the, where the personnel committee landed was somewhere around 16, 16 and a quarter, 1650. It just depends on where you're at. So, you know, I don't know if the officials will sue or not. I think if they do, they'll win. Now, I don't know what the judge will rule and we don't even know if this would happen, but if he were to rule in their favor, and he's gonna tell us, I suppose, what we've got to set that salary rate at. And I'll see. Now, if he says we gotta set it at 22% above, you know, where they're at now, then that's where we gotta set it. But it's worth mentioning, and the only reason I mention it is because to do that, those are reoccurring dollars, you would have to have an increase in taxes at that time to match whatever that the rate was set at. So, you know, and then you have to double that for schools. So, you know, I just think that's worth saying because it's highly, it's possible that whatever rate we set tonight, whether it's, it doesn't matter, if you're 60 person or 50 person or whatever, I'm an 86 person. If you're sixty-person or fifty-person or whatever, I'm an eighty-six person. Whatever that rate is, without those raises, if we don't put those in there, and then we... Or if we got the 101 general fund to give the raises, and then we're in the same spot we are next year with reoccurring funds, I don't see that we've made much traction. I... But I want to put that out there because I don't know if it'll happen, and I don't know what the verdict would be. But I think that, uh, at that time, we would be looking, whenever that is, six months, a year down the road, if a verdict was not... Was in their favor, then we'd be looking at raising taxes again and doubling it again. And that could be as much as, and I'm gonna miss these numbers some, so don't quote me on these numbers, but I think I know that instead of seven cents, this is what it costs now. I think that number would look at something more like... We'll get this wrong a little bit, but thirteen to twenty-three cents, depending on what the ruling would be. Because you never know what the ruling will be. And then you double, if you take the lowest ruling, which is thirteen cents, you double that, that's twenty-six. So, you, you know, if you were to... If that happens, and we don't give those raises, then you stand a high, or at least a probability of having to raise it twenty-six cents later anyway. So, not trying to change your mind, really, not worth... Not... Just worth saying, I think. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Talking about the raises, that at any point, the department heads are not there to top out. I mean, we're talking about straight across the board raises that we're talking about.
Twenty... Twenty years other than COA.
Evaluated raises, raises. Which one... Which one is?
It's twenty years other than COA, cost of living.
It's not across the board raises like last year.
Sir?
Yeah.
Across the board raises, everybody don't get five percent or...
It's a whole new scale. What we came up with was a completely new scale. It doesn't have forty-three steps. It only has five. It's very, very simple. Uh, but you basically top out at twenty years, and, uh, and that does not include officials because officials' pay rate is set by the state.
I said earlier that I thought we were possibly getting the cart before the horse. Do we have a appropriations resolution that supports the eighty cents?
No, sir.
So, if we pass the debate, we still gotta go back to the budget to figure out where that...
It doesn't have to go back to the budget, but it would be have to be something passed in this commission that matches it up. I mean, you could... It's up to the commission. You can take away, or you can add from other sources to make the appropriations the same. But like Commissioner Cooley says, the way we're doing it is the cart before the horse, uh, because we're...
You need to pass the eighty cents.
That... That does not cover what all the appropriations are with... Without either... You can not fulfill the, uh, the general budget, uh, bringing it up to what was proposed and let it sit below there, uh, and still have all the appropriations the same, or you could take it from some other source. But you're correct, there's not a match between the two at this time. Commissioner Cunningham?
We need a motion that, uh, to pass an appropriations bill based on the eighty cents, and then we need to do a tax, uh, at eighty cents, and then we need to do the nonprofits. That's what we need to do to get a budget. It's not... Need those three motions. And like I say, we didn't have to go back to there doing the tax rate first. Then the appropriations resolution based on that eighty cent.
How do we do that?
Make a motion to do that, like I said, say, we know appropriations are moving. We pass an appropriations bill based on an eighty cent property tax increase for the general fund, forty cents per student.
But that's really... That's really jumping the gun. What we need to do is get the tax rate passed. We don't know... We don't know right now that we're gonna have to eighty.
Actually, you do the appropriations first, then the tax, and then the nonprofits, and then that order, actually.
If we don't pass the tax increase, how are you gonna do appropriations?
Well, like I said, we gotta go together. I mean, you gotta have all three of them passed, or it doesn't work.
I would... I would think the tax increase would come first. And let's just say we went to seventy, then you'd have to do appropriations based on...
I don't... I still don't know why that the, uh, that the ARP money is so holy that we can't use it to buffer... Buffer this next year's budget, make it palatable to the taxpayers, and be able to do all the appropriations.
Do I make a motion? Do we do that?
You can. Uh, I... I think it should be, uh, an appro... A tax rate and with the difference to fulfill those appropriations as they're stated. Um, that would be appropriate. But you gotta... You need to give me a tax rate also with a... Then, uh, all the appropriations being as stated and making up the difference out of ARP money.
Well, my... My people in District Three are not opposed to tax revenues. They're not opposed to absorbent, large... And in situations when I run into financial problems, I compromise and I do what I have to do to survive. And I think everybody in this county does too, and I think our government has to do it. I was... And I think our offices are run efficiently, and they try to do the best they can. But having said that, I cannot represent in District Three, I cannot vote for a tax increase that's gonna burden them. So, I'm gonna recommend, let's raise them sixty cents, and that's still gonna be a pretty good burden. Thirty, thirty, and fill it up with the ARP money. And that way, the budget remains just like it is. We just fill it. Next year, we'll deal with it again. Hopefully, between now and next year, our revenues will be better because industry did different things, you know?
Okay. So, a two dollar and seventy cents rate? Two dollar... Okay. Appropriations being the same as stated, any difference that we have to make up would come from the ARP funds. Okay. Do I have a second? I'm... I'm... Okay, Commissioner Spray. Does everybody understand the motion?
Do we have enough ARP funds to go to yet?
Uh, we do. Any other discussion? We're kicking the can down, but like he said, we really don't know how much we haven't got this year, and we still don't know how much we're gonna get ne... Well, we know we're gonna get a million one additional in income next year, but we don't know about what we hadn't got from the city on the, um, um, the, uh, pilots and our, um, uh, uh, tax abatements. Comi... Commissioner Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this budget that's been presented, we're gonna fund the new pay scale, gonna fund the raises, gonna add spending to the last budget that we're way behind already. We're still gonna do all the nonprofits, and you're not gonna make any cut. You're gonna base it on... I mean, how much further in the hole do we project that this will put us for next year? I mean, it's bound to put us in a hole, and you're gonna use the ARP funds to fill in the gap or revenue that maybe we'll get, maybe we won't. You're counting on one point two million in money that we probably will get, but it could be as much as twenty-five before we get it. It says up to two years. Uh, we may have some additional revenue coming in, but we can... I can guarantee you we've got a bunch of additional expenses coming in that we hadn't counted on as well. Got the email on the JCF company yesterday, you know, that it folded. So, that was sixty-something thousand, you know, that we're not gonna get. We had appropriated eight hundred and fifty thousand for the archives to build the... Renovate the archives out of the ARP funds. Uh, got our first estimate back on that, one point two million. We're down four hundred thousand on doing that project, and we were gonna have to move ARP funds around as it is. That's information that we've just gotten in the last few days since we had the budget meeting. So, where's that money gonna come from? That's the number-one thing in my mind that we had to get done, was this archive. We've got... We've got records sitting all over the place. They're stacking up in the Circuit Court Clerk's office back there. She's nodding her head, you know? And like I say, that's just the estimate. We hadn't got the bids yet. Hadn't got the bids on the schools yet, but I guarantee you, they're gonna be higher than what we expected. Uh, this archive is a project that... That we must do. And we've just been darn lucky that we got these ARP funds, uh, just money that fell out of the sky because not a one of our elected representatives voted for it. Uh, but we're spending that money, and then next year, it'll be gone. Then how are we gonna cover those expenses then? We're gonna come back in here and raise taxes again, have this same argument all over again? And what we've done, we've blown our ARP funds, and now we can't do windows in the courthouse. We can't do the archives. We can't do the big list of things that we need to do because we've... We've just been irresponsible and not willing to make a decision and putting it off a year. It doesn't help anybody, folks. Let's... Let's make a decision. We don't need to do this budget. You know, this is... This is just a makeshift budget. Uh, it's not gonna get us anywhere. We need to get back to the eighty cents, seventy-eight, eighty cents, something like that. That's... That's where we need to be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, you go home and tell your district what you did tonight, see how happy they are. They've already been talking to me about recalling a bunch of us because we boked all of these big taxes in on them. They can't pay them, and we might as well quit spending money. We spend money like a drunken sailor around here.
Okay. Has any other discussion from the commission? Okay, does everybody understand what the motion is? It's for a two dollar and seventy cent rate. It's for the appropriations as proposed, and, uh, to make up the difference on this for would be coming from our ARP funds. Any questions? Tim?
Uh, for the audience out there, my name is Tim Gill. I'm the County Road Superintendent. Um, there, the County Highway Department is not in any way gonna get any of this money from this tax increase. But the ARP money, we do have a vest in that because, uh, that was set aside for the road that's gonna connect Beard and Mill Bridge with Melina Road. Uh, you know, this money, we set it... Set aside seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. We give, uh, the EMA and the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department was wanting some money to build the building that parked city. We give up a hundred and fifty thousand. So, we're down to six hundred thousand. I just got an estimate today, well, yesterday, on the road, and it's at six hundred and eleven thousand. That does not include paving. That's just to put the... The, uh... Set it to grade, rock it. It's got a blind hill on it. We've gotta take the blind hill and add to it, so... To make it safe. So, uh, you know, that's money that if we don't do it now, it's gonna have to be done next year. They're supposed to take bids, and I've heard different dates. I talked to T-Daw out there today. They're supposed to bid it in January. So, the road will need to be built, and it needs to set for about a year and a half to two years to settle out before we even pave it. So, that's where I'm at. I mean, I'd like to have my ARP money. It was set aside by the Finance Committee to, uh... Where each dollar of it went, it's been changed around. I've already lost a hundred and fifty thousand that I could use for paving, but, uh, it's gonna take care of a bit, that six hundred thousand, if not more. So, we can either use the ARP money or try to get some money next year if it's available. Now, if it's not available, I don't know what we're gonna do. So, we do have a good fund balance at the Highway Department. I put nine hundred thousand dollars into the... Out of the, uh, fund balance into our budget this year to try to cover some of the cost of materials. Our materials have doubled. Next year, if I have to pull out some more money, my fund balance is gonna be down to nothing, and we're gonna be looking at another tax increase. My materials is over-doubled on everything we use: pipe, oil, rock. We're paying twenty-two dollars a ton for rock, what we have to buy. We make most of our rock out there. So, you know, our pipe has doubled. Everything we use has doubled. So, I've got a good fund balance. I look after my fund balance, and that's what I do because of years like this, it's coming up. We got by last year pretty good. We had to add money this year. We will have to add money next year unless I increase my budget. And I don't want to do that. But the Highway Department's getting none of this tax increase, none whatsoever. So, we got our own fund at the Highway Department. I've been managing it well, and I'm not keeping my ARP money if I keep it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Question?
Uh, I just wanted to discuss further. I'm a new commissioner, and we have inherited a mess on lots of levels. I think that most of the new ones would concur. One of the things I've been most disappointed about once getting in is, and with all due respect, is the lack of planning. And here we are tonight, and some people are just willy-nilly throwing these reckless numbers out, have done no planning, they haven't done any homework. You know, maybe we hear from some... A constituent on Facebook that they want this or that, but have you put the time in to research and know the knowledge behind that decision and what it's going to impact? Moving forward, these... This suggestion, and I love everybody, and I don't want to be ugly, but I've just gotta speak my heart and the truth, you know? Lack of planning got here, and lack of planning tonight with some of these motions is gonna put us in the cracker down the road too. We gotta have some planning. We're gonna get ourselves in a bigger mess. The forty cents, to me, is fine. If y'all wanna go down to the thirty-eight, you know, then so be it. But any lower than that, I mean, we've already been told multiple times by previous finance director, it was at, what was it, thirty-nine cents? That's bare bones. Here we are, bare bones again. And I agree, I'm mad at y'all. I gotta pay it, the county and the city. You think I wanna pay it? Heck no. But I want a better Lincoln County, and I know we got a plan, and that has been lacking, and throwing these numbers out just because my constituent wants it with no real backing of to why you got there is reckless. It's really not.
I've heard over and over tonight of how things have increased in price. Inflation, 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 and that's something that no one could plan for. And that's what we are all feeling, everyone in this room. And that is something that needs to be considered before you say that there was a lack of planning.
The purchase of Richardson property, when most of the community against it, was against it when we took one billion dollars, and we paid two seventy out of the economic line development every year, was poor planning. There were some other things that were... I gotta work with everybody up here, but again, I gotta speak my heart and my truth, and it is what it is. And that got us in the hole, and now we got a bucket we gotta fill up. And y'all want to put inches of spoonfuls of dirt in it. We gotta throw some more in there to fill it up so we can move on, so we don't break our ankle every time we step over the dirty thing.
Any other? Okay, we have a motion been properly seconded for a tax rate of two dollars and seventy cents. Everybody understand that part of it? Okay? Yes, sir?
I disagree, uh, on several points, but I think we've had incorrect planning over the years. The problem is, we hadn't taken the action necessary to implement that planning, and that's where we are tonight, you know? We're gonna... We're throwing numbers out there, and they're gonna fall short of what it takes for us to operate on, and we're just gonna be in that much bigger mess next year than we are this year. You know, let's... Let's take care of our business. There were people that wanted to do it last year. We should have taken action last year. But just like this year, nobody wanted to do it. Let's put it off till next year. You know, you just can't keep doing that over and over again. Sometimes you got to take care of your business, and, uh, this plan is not taking care of our business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
Mr. Cunningham is correct. At budget last year, several did advocate for a property, um, tax increase. I was at that meeting super late. Um, not everybody was at that meeting, but they did advocate for that last year and couldn't get it to pass, but I still hope to do it. and couldn't get it to pass, but I still hope through that, I say.
Any other discuss, Commissioner Bryan?
Just a tiny bit. Um, the planning issue, and, and I wanna talk about that a little bit, 'cause you're exactly right. There were at least four commissioners at, uh, last year's budget meeting that advocated for a tax increase. And I think some of the exact words were, "It's gonna get really bad next year," that's some of the words we used. Uh, but, and, you know, but the two years before that's what I wanna talk about for a second, at least two years. Um, you know, last year, I was one of the guys that said we should have raised it last year. That's just me. But, 'cause that's when we needed it. And we, I don't think we'd be in quite as bad a shape now if we'd have done it last year. But that, that didn't happen, so that's water under the bridge. The two years before that, uh, were COVID years. Now, there's a bunch of people in this room that didn't get to work, that didn't get a paycheck, that, uh, were financially strapped during those times. Uh, it, it's awful. And then you couple that with the inflationary cost that we've seen over the last two to three years, and it's, it's a real problem. So, I take offense, uh, with the lack of planning, um, thing. Uh, and the reason I take that offense is because the, two, three years ago, we said, okay, it's COVID, people are really struggling, and they were really struggling. Uh, you know, we had school wasn't in session, you got parents trying to shuffle kids around, you got having to pay extra daycare because you couldn't find anywhere to go with your children. All those things were burdening the taxpayer. So that's three years ago. Two years ago, same problems. You know, we got, we got those same issues that we were. So last year, a bunch of people said, let's raise taxes. I'm gonna tell you exactly what was said, 'cause y'all know me. It, it, here's what was said by most of the people. It's an election year, and we can't raise taxes on an election year. I had a fellow gets a dang mad at me at that last meeting, and I, I thought we were gonna have to go out in the yard. But that's exactly what was said. Had we done this last year, we would probably have been looking at about 40 cents last year. We could have done something pretty fantastic with that, um, you know, this year, and I think we'd have been fine. Now, as to fo, as to raising it a little bit every year, I, the first year, I've been here 20 something years, 22 years, and I ran my first four years on raising taxes every single year, or lowering it, whatever it needed to be. That was my goal. And I'm gonna tell you, it's not gonna ever happen. It's, it's a lofty goal. I wish we could have raised it one or two cents every, every single year, but you're gonna get those things that come up. And folks were just not gonna do it, and the commission has never done the business that way. And it's a terrible tax increase. But it's not because of lack of planning. It's because we, on the two previous years before last year, we felt that the county citizens just simply couldn't abide anything. And then last year, uh, we tried to raise it, and some of us did, and folks didn't wanna do it. It's just that simple. So, I, I, I really don't, uh, care for the hearing. And the reason I don't care for lack of planning, if you've been to any of our personnel or Budget Committee meetings, you know that, Lord help us, we stayed there to 10:00, 10:30 this year. Same thing happened last year, same thing happens every year. So, you know, the planning's there. Uh, people are concerned about the school system, things of that nature. Uh, school system has a five-year plan. It's an active five-year plan. We mark things off that system every single year. And, uh, you know, and I've, uh, heard a few things. We, one gentleman alluded to that tonight, and that's fine, and I'll say this, uh, and I'll hush. Um, you know, when we were talking about building Highland Rim, Highland Rim's an old school. And, um, it's got some issues up front that if you ever had to fix, you're gonna have to do a bunch of abatement. It's gonna cost a bunch of money. I mean, a bunch of money. Um, and there's just some things you can't abate without jackhammer up the floor. It's just that simple. So, the building's old. It's about 60 years old, 60 years plus. And what you, what you have with that is you have failing infrastructure. Now, the last three years on basically purpose, because we didn't know whether we were gonna build one school or try to build a small school. Just that simple. You know, we, that was, those were the plans, it's part of the five-year plan. It's been on top of the five-year plan for five years. That was the, it's the number one. We've even done surveys out in the, in the community. So, we had community input on this. We had everybody's input on this. So, it's the, the number one thing at the top of our list. Everything migrates on our five-year plan. It migrates from the bottom to the top, whatever gets the most votes, it gets to the top, and that's your number one goal. Right now, we have some goals out there. If we could get a budget passed to really do some extensive renovations at Lincoln County High School and the gym nation. I mean, that is, out of fund balance even. So, uh, not, not needing any tax money. But the, the fact of the matter is that no, it's nobody's fault that things aging, but the, those three years prior to this year, we did not do some of the maintenance things that we could have done, because you don't put money into something you may be gonna tear down. Now, this summer, we worked really hard to do that, and I'm like everybody else, I, I have the help that I most of the time need, but sometime we're way behind. We don't have an HVAC technician right now. I can't pay one enough money. I talked, ours had to leave because he got a raise and he went somewhere else. Fact of the matter is, I've talked with five people on the phone, and they've laughed at me. Just that simple. So, there's a problem. Um, and I take offense to anybody that says a school and all the county doesn't have a plan, because we do. And we've implemented that plan over the last three years, in particular, as it related to COVID. And last year, I can't tell you. I was one of the ones that said we should have done it, and they said it was an election year. So now, I'll give you last year. Won't give you the ones before that, but I'll give you last year.
Well, the school is not the one that has the problem balance down there. Check the county, it's gonna be a shit.
Okay. Let me, before we get into other discussion, when we talk about, let's don't get this in the future, let me tell you a couple of things. And this is, uh, a lot of the new commissioners inherited this. The next time a pilot or abatement comes up, don't vote for it. And the next time it comes up for, let's reduce our, uh, yearly cycle on our tax appraisal, just like the comptroller told us, everybody was there, was 15 of us there. We need to reduce that cycle. We would not be in this, if we did either of those two things, we would not be in this position we're in. We've given away our tax base, when we've given away our services of our workforce. That's what the industries came for, our workforce, and we gave away our tax base. We've also need to, and if it wasn't for Paul Brayden, we would be on a six-year cycle, and we would be in a lot more trouble than we are now. So, remember, whatever we do on this, remember it, next time those come up, uh, to step up and let's don't give away stuff, and let's start looking at reducing the yearly cycle that we're on on reappraisal. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. If you will call the roll. Everybody understand what the motion is? $2.70, uh, tax rate, the same appropriation and ARP be, money be used for any, uh, net that's needed to put back in, uh, far as that.
May I make the motion to amend the motion on the floor?
You can.
I'd like to, uh, move to have the 80 cents tax rate.
Okay. Change the 270 to 280, okay? As, as a. Okay, okay, from a six, from a 60 to a 80. Okay. Okay, does everybody? The motion is to amend the motion that's on the floor for the tax rate to be changed to. You, you did.
A question, sorry.
Okay. Okay. Where, am, am I, am I out of order not moving towards the vote? Okay, all right. Uh, did I, do I have a second on that? Commissioner Cunningham seconds it. Okay, so the total tax rate you're proposing on the amendment is? What's the tax rate? Okay, so $2.90, which is the exact motion that was before that failed.
290, Cunningham.
Right.
290.
Okay.
And leave the ARP funds out. Okay.
Does everybody understand? It's the same rate we voted for before. Okay, this is just an amendment to a motion on it. It's not a, it's not a redo on that. I think he's in order, but it is the same, it's the same motion that we had before. Everybody understand that? $2.90. The motion before amended was $2.70. Okay. If you vote yes on the amendment, you're voting for a $2.90 tax rate. Okay? Madam Clerk, are you ready to call the roll?
Cunningham?
Aye.
Haynes?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Nix?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Bradford? Tackett?
No.
Spray?
No.
Ashley?
No.
Guin?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rogers?
No.
Coley?
Yes.
Sanders? Walker?
No.
Frazrand?
No.
Hambrick?
Yes.
Rolls Walter?
Yes.
Bryant?
No.
Douglas?
No.
Guntherberg?
No.
Have 12 in favor, 11 voted no, and one absent.
Okay, the amendment failed. We're back to the original motion, which is $2.70. Are y'all ready for the roll call on this vote? 270. This is the original. There was amendment made, which changed the tax rate to 290. It failed. We're back to the original motion, which was $2.70.
Will this include the ARP fund?
It does, on the original motion, yes. Everything's funded under the appropriations and, and the nonprofits. You ready for a roll call, Madam Clerk? Okay?
Commissioner Bradford? I'm sorry, what'd he say? No. Tackett?
Yes.
Spray?
Yes.
Nix?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Haynes?
No.
Cunningham?
Aye.
Young?
No.
Coley?
No.
Sanders? Walker? Brown?
No.
Caldwell?
No.
Rogers?
No.
Frazrand?
Nay.
Hambrick?
No.
Rolls Walter?
No.
Bryant?
No.
Douglas?
No.
Guntherberg?
No.
Ashley?
Yes.
Guin?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Three in favor, 20 no, one absent.
Motion fails. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We're not moving anywhere on this tonight. Do I have a second? All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed? No. We're adjourned.